Concerned me and Leon, this is probably where I've got any some help ever came in. I think they said originally five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars for top. If you built it souped to nuts like it was supposed to be built. But we expressed, we're not that sophisticated here. And ask about a scaled back approach or something we could build to.
They will come in and measure the ground.
Okay.
And when I tell you they'll come in and measure the ground, I seen one of these groups come in. And they set up, they tripod and they give you the raw treatment.
Okay.
They measure it and when this piece of equipment comes in. It's, there's no room for error. The only thing that they may do, they may bring a bundle extra of that hot dog stuff that goes inside one of them. Uh, I was fortunate to have plenty left over and we hauled it, restored it and it's totally become useful. We used the last of it back in that same piece of playground with Fraser, but uh, that's still a process.
Well, she even, she even sought us out last Saturday. And I don't know if you had the opportunity or if you had the opportunity to meet the little boy, Scott. She brought him um, over to meet us last week. And I mean, it's, it's just, she's done a great job and I think it's something that we could, we could definitely utilize.
With her, her homework running with it, it's a whole lot to me, classroom.
Absolutely.
We got to uh, get with uh, unmoved plate and discuss the pros and cons. Make sure a hundred percent that that ten thousand dollars is gonna be waived because the day that we had the meeting in here and she says, well, you know that there's ten thousand dollars there. I said, uh, everything has to come with cost with that. No, we can afford that kind of money around here. She's the understand, but we can make something happen. And I had no idea this lady was coming all the way from Arkansas just to meet us.
Was that the lady last week that came?
Yes, the one that stood up.
Okay.
Yeah, they. She wasn't from around here.
What's the, what's the?
Okay, uh, what being said about the monkey bar? Mr. Public First Directive.
Yeah.
I want to speak about the monkey bar.
I believe when we were at Clark right now, let me call the bar and talk to them.
Okay.
Most of the information I got from, about you. Let me call them and talk to them and see what they say. See what their expectations are. They want us to go ahead and take them out.
If, if we have caution doll, if somebody gets on and gets hurt, are we still out?
No.
What did you post? Uh, well, I mean, you can talk to people, whoever that is about posting.
Yeah.
Like the sign when you go through and get a cup of coffee. I put it for some. Yeah.
It has to be posted.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that'll get you around the liability part and keep the, at least keep them open until we can do better. Not necessary. Uh, everything, uh, it, everything's got a caveat. I know that you can read.
Kevin, could you, could you also ask them if they're familiar with coding? I don't, I don't know much, but I know that if we could, if we could potentially code them, we could. Why does it come to something to keep them from getting it on?
They make complaints if you can use. I promise you, I can bring you a can of this, you don't want to get shit out of there as well.
Well, if you, if you could.
There's my, um, right now, I'm at nine thousand dollars, I'm just high way down. I ain't got nine thousand dollars worth of tables. Yeah. Okay, uh, any others?
I'm done.
Okay, uh, you got anything?
I'm trying to think of.
You got anything? Yeah, and you got anything? I, I got a question because uh, I seen where you posted that you were down at the park at what ten forty-five picking up. Did we have somebody down there that's supposed to be down there picking up the trash?
Oh, no. We had.
Did we have somebody at, at a certain time frame that should have been down there to help is what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, was he there? Or do we know if he was there?
Cause I went, I made, I was told about it, seeing him down there.
I saw people there when I was here. So, so I know from, what was it, twelve six, Scotty was there. Scotty done a great job, had three good trustees this year. Scotty did not stop all day. I mean, he was just constantly, he just constantly. Um, I don't know the same guy that was supposed to be down there. I saw him with one bag of garbage and the next time I saw him, I saw him sitting down. Um, I think he definitely, and that was the only time I saw him. I don't know who he is.
I, I don't either. I just know what I read and I don't wanna know. I understand y'all are gonna help some.
Yeah, we're gonna.
I, I get that.
Yeah.
But if, if our guy wasn't there and we're paying him.
Yeah.
I mean, if I'm not at work, they're not gonna pay me sitting here in Spring City for a job that I'm supposed to be doing.
I did know that, that we kinda had a discussion about the trustees. Because my original thoughts were that the trustees would come over and help the trash. But when we found out that Pyro Show screwed us over on the fireworks. And Kevin and Cliff had to build the mortars and set up everything and do all that. And they want sending a technician from Pyro Shows to do that except to be there when we push the buttons. They needed help cleaning up because it's a disaster area over there after you set off that big fireworks.
I've been over there and.
And, and so, well, they didn't. Um, and they don't because they sent one guy. And so, the trustees were over there helping him. And I think what would happen on Sunday morning is a city employee would be called in to go back out there on Sunday. So, we spent the last hour that we were there, um, going around with Donovan's mule, chomping the lot. Because the biggest part is down on that lower end where the lake is. And that's where the majority of your trash gets and we took off three garbage bags. So, I mean, I, I don't know who he is and I'm just, I, I see, I'm assuming that was who it was, the guy carrying the garbage. But I don't know who he is. I have not, never met him, so. I know who Scotty is just because he's been around.
Yeah, Scotty's been around. I'm, I'm just asking questions and.
Clean it up, it's in the contract.
No, it, it was in their contract, but we got screwed.
Well, I think that's for another time.
Yeah.
With the, the fireworks.
That was dollars plus.
I just wanted to know what, what it was. I got the answer, no offense to anybody, but I got the answer I thought I'd get, so.
Well, is the city gonna notify Pyro Show that they did not do what's in the contract or we need some refund?
Yeah, we should. I mean, I would figure we, we would do that. I, I can't, I can't say that. I can't, I don't think they'd care if I got off.
Yeah, and I think the difference has been, the person we've always had in the past, Matt Power, has been an employee of Pyro Shows for that day. And so, we always, always piled in to help Matt because he was one of us. And, and we piled in and helped and we cleaned. Uh, but this year, it was in the contract track, they added another thousand dollars to the contract two weeks before shade delay that we had to pay for not having fireworks. And um, it's in the contract, Leon read the contract, that they would clean up their mess and they would do all that. They had one guy over here, another guy. So, and the guy did not get here, if I'm not by the mistake, Hackler. What time did the guy get here?
He come in about nine for a little bit and then I think he come back in about two. He said he was gonna be back at three, but he come back at two.
Okay.
He did help with wiring it up.
Yeah, nice guy, but just one guy, you know?
I would just say, that's the prettiest fireworks that I've ever seen.
They, um, did you hear about Hackler? Greatest fireworks they've ever had in Spring City.
They did a great job.
I found out that it was something that was gorgeous.
Yeah, they, they were gorgeous.
I spread my ankle up there to do that right at home, so.
Excuse me.
I watched fireworks for a moment.
That's all I have.
I didn't get an answer, are they gonna be notified if?
You'll, you'll notify them over the, see if they agree.
I'll notify them, but I'm just gonna go ahead and tell you the contract's been signed and once it's signed, it's done.
So, they don't have.
And that's it, that's gonna be the answer that I wanna get is if you do sign the contract, you're gonna reset up the fireworks.
So, so they don't have to honor what they said that, that's what, that's what.
That's why we're gonna solicit bids.
Yeah, why the hell would you hire somebody that ain't gonna go buy a con-? Why would you even sign a damn contract? That's crazy.
But we paid an extra thousand dollars.
Well, it is, it is one of them things, people, that has happened time and time again, okay? You get comfortable using the same old shoemaker.
Yeah.
And he loves you the way he wants to do you because he's got you. You're a hook. You're not going nowhere.
Well, that's what I was.
And that's why I jump up and down and turn the monkey flip saying, hey, we got to change.
Wait, we're gonna have to solicit bids.
We're gonna have to look out. It's the same thing with getting the roads paved. We're gonna have to look at other companies. I'm talking to some companies right now trying to get some kind of quota stuff of a patch, patch, a patch work. You give me twenty-five feet of this rip road, what can you do it for? They pay driving lanes and everything else. I think that we might could get lucky enough to do some damage control. They fix it, but you can do some damage. But the, we have a chance. We've, at, at the top to, to change everything when we hire somebody. What we have a, we have a chance to start all over. But if we sit up here and do the same old thing and just be the same old way, nothing will ever change in this town. I, 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 that's my personal opinion and I, I've tried it and tried it and. I know I've not been here the last two years because I've been on the road. But a lot of this falls on us, whether we wanna admit it or not. Everybody's got their, I, I look at it as like, this is what we're supposed to do, make change. And we don't, we, we don't, we don't do a good job at that. That, that's just my personal opinion. We, we relied on, everybody relied on Stefana to do everything and that's it. But that's just my personal opinion now. That's my personal opinion and that's what I say through mine, okay?
Well, what I was gonna say was that we have discussed putting that out for bids next year. And not staying with Pyro Shows just because we've done them, we've already discussed that.
Pyro's gotten really big. They do all the UT ball games, they do everything up.
Sometimes they get too big.
They got the monthly on everything and that's why I asked. But my question is, because I know that we, we need to start early for next year to, to get it out there and for somebody to, to post the bid. I don't know what you all have to do. But I would say that we need to start in August, in my opinion, to do it now. Because we need to know what we've got to work with. Because usually, I let you all know the dates as soon after. I've already got my dates for next year. But we contracted last year. We left off the rain day, we got screwed over on the rain day. We didn't care if we were down there in Scuba Seals, we were gonna have it last Saturday. We had it. We should be contracted now for next year, but we can't do that because we need to solicit bids. But I would think that we would need, need to do that within the next six to eight weeks.
We need to start looking online, know Pyro Technical Shows. So, how you do that? Soliciting bids.
Yes.
You don't solicit until you know who's out there you're gonna get.
Right.
Uh, I went into a guy today, he's a local guy. He's got his Pyro Technical card. But I've known this man for over a year. He's on his way to Alabama to do his shooting for tomorrow. I looked at him, I said, and you know you've had this card in your possession? He said, man, I used to do them back home in Indiana. He said, we go do big pro balls. He says, I can put in three hundred seventy-five dollars out. That's his, where he's getting paid today. But going back to something another. New regime paper. People should be happy with people, man. We got to change, given's honor to change, talk about change. The change has to start right here. No, we have not been involved because you know something? I could throw the whole town under the bus for some simple things that we've done. As long as I'm there, we can handle it. We give away a perfectly good two fifty four truck that till this day, my guys are still driving the hell out of it. When the state trooper pulls them over, what's that Kevin do?
Feeding them a truck.
Get a truck and everybody at work for the city lives, a piece of junk.
Going downhill.
No, this truck going up Dayton Mountain. We had a utility trailer, we had two commercial motors, drag racing one another. Sixty-five mile an hour climbing Dayton Mountain. The only trouble that truck's ever deal, if you crowded pulling a tractor behind you, you broke transmission. Other than that, we ain't done nothing.
But it was not good enough for us.
It wasn't good enough. I got a problem with that anyway and I'm not gonna discuss that. But what it is, change begins with us, people. We gonna have to be a little bit more involved in our city business. A little more hands-on and a lot of our city equipment because we technically hang young people out to drive. Because we're not involved with it. I have told Mr. Brandon, you got a problem anything, you call me. I don't mind where I'm at, I'm heading this way to see what I need to do. I've told the others the same thing. We gotta be involved, we can't just say, you handle it. And then we'll come and vote on it and we don't know a T hot ass thing about it. Don't have a clue. You don't know how pissed I've been about that truck ever since I've been. No, we voted, given we. Boy, I know, I didn't do that. I couldn't vote it's been given to me. I remember that, I had to, thank you. But still, we took the old truck and it's still running. We gotta be a little bit more involved as a commission board, whether we like it or not, to help our people out. We gotta go visit with our people. We need to go talk to them on the job. How you doing, how's it going? See what they doing. On the alert, pick up guy and stuff. The man was down there, poor performance, okay? That's how I would describe it, leave it at very poor performance.
Somebody got paid for it.
Yeah, it, it got paid for. That's my problem. That's my problem with it, but it was poor performance. I agree, he got paid. Uh, communication, I was communicating, made that, that issue that been there. Okay? I'll leave that into the hand of the management department. It sees us otherwise, I'll bring it before the commission board if people have to have it. That's just the way I feel about it from my part.
Is, is he new? Is he new?
Yeah, sort of kind of something like.
Okay, I've never seen him before, so I didn't know.
He came to work almost a lifetime.
So, he's been here almost a lifetime?
Almost.
Once you've been in discussion, that stuff works. But anyway.
Talk about the city.
Oh, yes, in the city voting. Uh, one of the things commission board will have to do before I get into citizen input is we need to have an executive session so we can discuss a city manager's salary. Reason why I'm gonna do that is we gonna send one in something. And again, as long as I'm up here, whether y'all like it or not, I don't agree with somebody being in that position, on salary, getting a raise every year. I don't agree if we got a system that we do not do evaluations. I talked to Mr. Warren, he says, I will send you these cards. Y'all go do and y'all fill them out, y'all send them back to me. And I'll be the judge and jury of what the performance is. Has not been done, been here five years, okay? Embolies, you know, I went around and talked to Embolies, wait, you got it, you got a year? I ain't had one. Been here several, several years and I had one.
I suggested that to study.
Well, I know I suggested to the same person you did and I got told the same thing you probably did. I haven't, if ever.
We talked about that years ago about doing an evaluation for city manager.
We, we, we as a commission board should have that right and should do it. And all upper personnel should do an evaluation on same people. So, it is at our disposal for us to look at. Remember the ordeal we run into where we had to dismiss Embolies or something? They've been written up four times. And what was my comment then first? My comment was, four times, buddy, when you hit three, you better be talking pinky and forget about me. Well, it was kinda good out here, I can, you are a free striker, you have to play baseball. Same thing on the job. But we as the commission board, we need to have an executive session here. I want to do it within the next two weeks, probably before sometime during the middle of July. Uh, yeah, with our term, we, well, we need to find out when she's available. Sorry. Find out when she might be available. Generally, we like to have it sometime, probably on Friday, if all possible. That work for you, Commissioner Jean?
Yeah, I'd rather do it on Friday and, uh, and back to that. We're gonna have to find somebody that's more accommodating for us on that eventually. Because I understand she's semi-retired, I got no problem with her, but we need, we, we may need to look into that. Uh, because we may need her at any time. And she tried, I know she does pretty good at being here, but. But it's, once again, that's one of my personal opinion things. I got a lot of them.
I will be out of town on the eighteen.
Well, like I said, we gotta check her, see what her schedule. Uh, we, uh, we need to have this before MPAS sends us, uh, a slate that's called, and all of us.
Deadline June.
Uh, yeah, but see, MPAS gonna do all the interviews. Then they gonna do their evaluation, they gonna send us the top three candidates for us. And uh, in doing so, I like to get this salary thing documented and stone. I'm not gonna have a guess game, not gonna like a don'ts gonna be home. And somebody said, well, what do you see the manager like? Well, I mean, think, let me start having. Uh, no, it's gonna be a dollar figure.
Mr. Mayor, can you decide, y'all decide with salary?
Yes, ma'am, we're supposed to. We're going to, I'm supposed to, we're going, we're going to.
I got a question. Do our city employees have a time card that they check in for morning when they come to work and when they leave in afternoon?
We don't have a time, you're talking like like a time machine?
No.
Like a time machine.
Well, punching, just, the post office, we get paper once if we sign different.
Oh, yeah, sign in sheets.
We have a, we have a time, time sheet.
Yeah, sign in sheet.
Well, who oversees these employees of the daytime to see that they're working and not sitting somewhere under a shade tree or in city hall?
That's what the department head report. That's why we have a public works department head, we have our chief, we have our water and sewer supervisor.
Have they ever reported anyone?
Excuse me?
Have they ever reported anyone not working?
Not one of them. So, so did somebody serve?
Can I finish, please?
Oh, yes, you can.
I'm sorry. Uh, that's something that we need to do. And want to bring to your attention to get it off my chest because our business side of it is not up to par. We have not done due dealings with our employees, we not done due dealings with our sales. We come in here and we vote to do something, doesn't, we don't have plans to vote. I got another cranky one on my hand, I'm like, I'm bringing it up just one time. Somebody called me to inspire everybody in the kitchen. But folks, we might be more involved, more hands-on, I'm sorry. The people elected us to do something like this. I show up here twice a month, three times a month, hold a leak, I refuse to vote on anything, I ain't touching no more, I'm sorry. Y'all call me Nick Picky or whatever it is. I'm August. I'm gonna look like a kid on a horse in there. I don't want to be a part of it, I want, no. I want to be able to answer questions. I don't want to have to call somebody to ask for an answer. What am I saying, I'm thundering my opinion. That's what an employee, a boss would say to me, and I've had to say to him. I'm not thinking you said, look, everything's been you to do. That's why I tell everybody, I don't get paid for things, I gotta know what I'm doing before I do it. I come into this wagon blind before I had, talking about getting swamped. And there's another issue on my mind, let's go through it, got citizen's invoice. And I want to have a light song in the next tonight. Uh, Donovan, listen.
Oh, I got my question.
You got your question answered.
I make the request that the fireworks be shot on fourth of July, uh, next year. That I think that fourth of July, almost Saturday.
Here's the book. Here's what I will say. That's what the town wants, okay? And we love how I look at it. But it's gonna be everybody might pitch in and do that for our share. And, well, let me go through the cause. I'll thank you, great idea. Patrick?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of questions. I'm glad you were, you were talking about answering questions, I got some for you. Uh, first one is, I run the farmer's market over there, as you know, and where the reason I have it over there on private property is because I don't feel the town's been supportive of anything I've tried to do here. Uh, so I didn't approach you about doing it on Front Street. I'm here today to try once again to see if we can move it to Front Street. It's over there, the benefits, I don't make a nickel on it. Some might attract and say, oh, you're a for-profit. I get up early, go down, do the net, I'm inspired a former employee to come out and help me. We take donations that benefit the Friends of Library, funds uh, children's reading programs. I think it would do much better to move it over to Front Street for this building. We chose that location because it's private property. The town can't tell me, I can't.
Well, here's, here's what I will say to you. Now, if I haven't said this to you, I'm saying to you now. They sometimes, you need to go to the top of the cornstalk to talk to the years up there that stood, started at zero. No disrespect. I know how it got that way and my, my plea is this. I'm willing to try to work out anything that benefits this city. Had born and raised here, run up every street, been up every hula holler and back alley there are. Reason why I feel the way I do about this town is because of a lot of the elderly people that are here. That were with my daddy and grandpa. Them folks are a dog. I could name names of some of these people in this room, but it'd be like, how do you know? As a little snot-nosed kid running around with an old man who chews on horses and first one thing to another. Lawson's is on the lumberyard right down here. Mr. Fred English is on the hardware, Westmanado. Mr. Craven Hints lived over here. the lady's husband, talk about the library, Leonard Pack. Lot of them men, I got to hang around, I got the bully dog. They, what would they think about someone who's right nowadays facing the actions of the things that we've done here in the city? They'd be slightly disappointed, because I feel that. Because I've had them gentlemen do really school. Mr. Trapp, right, worked at Westmanado, one old man. Made me fifty cents to help him change him if he didn't buy some parking. Come by here tonight, so I could buy a fishing. You want me to tell all myself? Reason why he got tired of me doing that? I went in and I had to have a special kind of a little pocket. And I need to have the money to pay. He took the money out of his pocket, put it in my hand and said, you don't have to be like some people who come to you and try to sneak out here and put it in your pocket. You go thank them. So, I be, then he asked me, come by here, I'll let you earn some money. Mr. Chad went on, but I still remember. I'm willing to see what we can do to accommodate moving to farmer's market. I'd like to rent it technically in another location. Technically, I'd like to have it somewhere where it might be some kind of a shelter. and county owns a car. A lot of people don't understand when I say I got a place, boom, people's got their pockets. I don't know why we couldn't accommodate and, and let's take a trial, we'll stab that. Would it be any problem if we had it over in the grassy area where we had the little fire?
Conference.
Yeah.
I don't see any problem, I mean, if we had it there, there, I don't see any problem with having the farmer's market there.
What do you think about that?
That would be awesome.
That would be awesome, that'd be awesome.
See, I'm a negotiator, I, I'll, I'll, I'll deal with saying, obviously, he was pitched for our money back.
But my caveat would be, I would like to keep the donations going to the library, we have made that commitment to them. To win-win.
At that, at the library is part of the city.
It benefits, it benefits, I'm, I'm, I'm all in with that. But I'm willing to, like I say, let's give it a whirl, see what kind of excitement. Okay, we plan on doing that, let's go around, we can go around.
Did you just have it Saturday?
We just had one, so, so.
Three, three groups.
And thank you for doing that.
Yeah, they will.
Twelve, twelve.
Eleven's on Friday, it's easier to add four.
We're off to twenty-five, they would say, oh, okay.
But uh, let's uh, let's try that, and wait.
And I know there's elderly people in the community that, I spoke to thirty-eight or so, that didn't even know we had a farmer's market, I guess, back there.
The honest problem is signage, okay, a lot of people think crazy, oh, we posted on Facebook, we shared it.
Yeah, they don't look at that stuff.
Billboard signs, please fly with both hands.
We make motion.
Yes, we got to, only we doing shit. Everybody.
We use not uh Farmer's Market, allowing them to try it out, Front Street is coming up, is following what, well, just going forward.
In, in the grass.
In the grass.
We'll get the grass. All right. Got to make a motion, and secondly, that we uh honor the movement of the farmer's market to Mump Street over in the grass. Uh, by fence, see for a draw, wanted to go find. Been made motion by Vice Mayor Bauer, saved by Commissioner Murphy, roll hall plate.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Ah.
Commissioner Murphy? Vice Mayor Bauer, uh, Mayor Law?
Ah.
Thank you.
And if I may, I have another issue that I want to bring up. We talked about being more involved, and that's what I'm seeking from the commission. And recently, we had, I've had several issues over uh issues with the tourism commission, as you're probably all well aware, Chamber of Commerce. And now recently, there was a post by Friends of the Park on social media. I know you can't restrict what they say. My suggestion to you is to be involved to such a level, I've heard of the Good Neighbor provision. I'm supposed to be contacted whenever something happens out here, I have business on Front Street, I pay the city a lot of taxes. I'm not getting any of this. And when I bring this up, we, I came to the tourism commission, that was years ago. We're not doing any better today than we were back then. You talked about a little bit, a little, little while ago, being more involved. How can we not get this resolved? We're not, I've had disparaging comments made on social media by members of Chamber of Commerce. Whether I'm a member or not, I used to be a member. No one ever has a problem reaching me when they want a donation. I always get those messages. But I can't get contacted, uh, the, the message that was put on social media about boycotting the pig for not making a donation, are you kidding me?
Boycotting, though, there was never anything said about boycotting. It was asked these people, because I know that the letters went out in February, did you say?
I wish so.
I can, I can bring up the post, suggestions, say, we're doing deliveries now, we don't have to shut.
Sir, it's, let me say this, okay? Like I said, I was, burned, burned the house down. Because I, I've been contacted by people over there. And some of the people that have called me and talked to me, I've even had some sponsored copy, that did. That Wade was worried, upset. The heading that had Towns Plain City on it in that post was technically, no. Towns Plain City is an ancient, never had been held up. That, that caused major chaos, and I'll tell you, I called people today. Vicky. And had meetings with most of the agents written, I told them, I said, look, I was dressing tonight, I'd like to pay nice. I know we have to get a handle on everything, not just some things, everything. And that's my reason for telling you all that I'd like to see a little bit more unity. You know what I feel like? That piece of chocolate blurred between them two white cushions. I'm kicking on all sides, folks. All I'm doing is peace, and I want us to do things the right way, I'm a negotiator. And you, and I went to a meeting about advertising, communication, social. I'm going to the others, been invited, and then I'm gonna bring all of these people that's involved in all these other things. Chamber, tourism, into the park, park board. You either in or you gonna be out, because you gonna lose that, okay? I have been guaranteed and promised. And I can't tell you why, I know that it works, and it's a fact, because these folks have promoted me. And gotten me to play Rockford Park next time. They've done good on advertising, they've done good on promotion of things. Uh, they're taking care of my Red Springs Park and Camp Range. You see anything on anybody's website about Red Springs Park and Camp Range? I ain't gonna, I ain't free to ask nobody, I will do it the way I have been. I have outside sources coming in today, I've got that. I've got, well, I had one campsite, my eleven, five-thirty apartment, I got it, and that, boom, people come in from North, from Severe. They paid money and they only showed up to take it. So, I, I'm getting advertisement, I, I feel what you say. Me and another person from Dayton talked about it, talked about your situation. We talked about the whole situation. And their thing with me was Leon, why does the city in Spring City feel like it's gotta be a fight between Dayton and Spring City? That got very, they hard, old Dayton gets this, old Dayton got that, they said they don't know how much old Dayton got in Dayton to get some of that stuff. And what they have to go do to do. Other thing that's been, while we haven't got lost, is simple documentation. That's all it takes, people. Documentation, we failed at documentation on our parks, we failed at documentation. I know that they come in and read. But we don't have anybody that does drone shots of activities in a city. The reason why I say drone shots, you can't shoot people's faces in your way, it's illegal. But drone shots of maybe activities is legal. And it enhances the attraction. Uh, I'm sorry, because they, they did use you for an example that you felt like you didn't ever. Who's brought that door. Uh, you're not the only business in Spring City that has contacted me and filled out a letter of fact. I have asked them to be so kind and be work on this, this project of going away this. Reason why I say that, you were here. You gonna get your city manager. City manager takes care of our website for the city, right, Miss Brendan? Now, you city manager, they, well, one of their raw, raw requirements is gonna be of me. Oh, they gonna advertise for it, on our website. I mean, I, I'm not blackballing nobody, any business. Uh, I don't know, and, and working at it and talking to some marketing people, they might be a little bit of a town that's still up against. They're trying to do it to where it don't make that kind of way. But they told me, and, and able to do this, they might be something. And like he told me, he said, look, these, these billboards, he said, but making money, they paid for that bitch for that store right there. Just for advertising. But yes, I feel what you say, I understand that, you're like, say, you're not the only business who said that.
The last three census in Spring City gone down in population, the town is shrinking. You talked about fighting with Dayton, I think we're fighting amongst ourselves here.
That's what it's trying to say.
We're in a competition with Rockwood and Dayton on some level.
Right, we ain't in a competition.
Well, no, by competition, I mean, we, we want people to come down to town, right? I was invited here, if I knew then what I knew now, I never would open that census. But, but we want people to come to Spring City, that's, that's all I mean by competition. Rockwood's got it going on, Dayton's got it going on, we're fighting with ourselves here.
We got a plan, yes.
My challenge to you, you know, I hear, oh, the chamber's a nonprofit, Friends of the Park's a nonprofit, Tourism Board's a nonprofit, there's still gotta be some oversight. If you're gonna allow people to get on social media to say whatever they want about the business, there's gotta be some, you still hold control over the venue. Whether they close out Front Street, they leave the views apart. So there's gotta be some consequence, when I brought up the question, the Good Neighbor, if they're not contacting me, what's the consequence? There is none, there's gotta be some consequence.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You know, I'm on the Tourism Board, and I know there's been different people from our board that they were going to businesses. And we know that obviously that has failed. And I know a couple of times people have gone, because both of us have other jobs. And somebody came through on Dayton, you were helping it. So what would you suggest, is it better to send to an email or a letter?
I take an email, I get email solicitations for donations all the time. Uh, sticking in the door, anything. I didn't get notified the last time by the tourism, it was two days prior to the event, I already knew about the, the event. I think that's kinda sad, when I hear about it through, but the notification gave me a map, a color-coded map, that was in black and white. It's showing around at this, or what was close off, and, you know, and I'm not being nitpicky, I, hey, two days prior, I appreciate that, that's a big improvement over none at all.
Okay.
But in this day and age, I think it's ridiculous that we can't work together.
Well, that's, I'm just trying to, just trying to see how we can improve it, like, because the people come in there, I didn't know if females.
From the GitHub, Johnny, and, and nobody may agree with me, but the city has control over all these events, correct? How many, how many businesses are on Front Street that, that's affected when you are on Front Street? Tell me how many businesses. Yours, Ace, Hasler's, Stephanie, Strider, and.
Staring.
And, and.
I'm starting to get it.
And, and.
A-Allis.
One person out of that office, because it's the city, this is my opinion. If the city's okay in things, one person can walk that way, and then walk down, it's not that far. I walked from my house to town plenty of times, even here lately. It's not, communication has been such a turd in this town for so long. And we don't, we do not do a good job of communicating.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm just gonna throw this as an example, the next time we have the lighting with Christmas on Front Street, why can we not have a month before the event? We invite all of those business owners to the meeting, and everybody get on the same page, you know, what day, what time, what's going on? And, you know, they may have some suggestions, or they may have some things they wanna do inside their business to coordinate with that, and everybody work together on that.
I don't have a problem with that, it's, but you have to, everybody has to be held accountable for failures, everybody. It, us included, look, I have to take a bite of every sandwich in here, I don't care how much I'm in here, if we get jumped on, no matter what, I, I'm part of this. I wanna see change, I wanna see everybody, I'm like Leon, I wanna see everybody get along. You gonna make everybody happy, I do get that. But eventually, sometime, you've gotta have a little harmony, you know, we haven't had it here in years. I don't, you're gonna go down.
But that, I would say, that's a great idea, as a business owner, I would just say, I wouldn't want to participate until.
You say the change.
Yeah, interrogatory comments on social media.
Well, there is, I'm not sure if I can, but we do have a social media policy for the city, which I think it's probably time for all of the people that are involved with the city to review that.
Well, we have our ethics policy on the.
Right, there's an ethics policy.
All members of any board under the city, uh, they need to have that, and they need to file on it.
Okay, so that's, for some of the other boards that are not, we, I've seen them number time. So that's something I think as a board, we need to make sure that everybody that's involved with, under the city umbrella, needs to review that and set sign on it, because I think some people don't realize that they're supposed to be following, you know, be nice.
I, I think I've learned something about it, I think it's fine as well.
So we, we, we have a long ways to go, but we're fifty weeks.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You, you're good. Angela Carth.
Well, I was just, I was gonna bring up, and, and of course, I want Doug to, to speak, since I know that there was a fence by Pig, or Pig took the fence to the post. The post was never meant to, to make any kind of suggestion other than, hey, here's the people that sponsored. Brenda told me last week that the letters went out in February, and I'm thinking, well, somebody's misplaced the letter, somebody's, because donations were low, am I right? We only got four thousand. Okay. And we got a fourteen thousand dollar bill. So my deal was post, when you freak with these businesses, ask them, you know, I mean, that's, I even mentioned that last week. Ask these businesses if they've donated or if they plan to, offer to take it, you know, offer to take it to City Hall. The park board can't afford to do it, I mean, we raise money, but we don't raise that kind of money, but it should not be on the city to have to pay.
And, and here's, I'm gonna bet B out of that.
Yeah.
There again. So nuts. And I wanna say this, I know he's got something to say. But when I was back involved in Hayway Ice O' Sock, every Saturday morning, I walked into Pig with two ice tents we got built up. Okay? I asked one time, if I could come over here, you need ice, just call, come and get it. On a business standpoint, if I'm running a business and I give you one thousand dollars, I'm gonna have to have somewhere between fifteen to twenty percent markup on my product, and how much product will I have to sell compensate for that? Five times the money. Yes. So, you, you gotta look at the business expectation of, yes, possibility, got laws, somebody in, in this, that B, you know, going at it, yeah. So, it, that, it's gotta be some more verbal communication. I said. I hate, if you can, you can.
Exactly.
But here's what I wanna say about the social media people. People can take one and twist it, can hear the argument, okay? Everybody's eyes sees it differently, everybody's mind reads it differently. So, you know, sometimes we gotta be very mindful of, of how this one took it one way, and buddy, that no wire been killed for it.
Well, there was, there was no offense at all, and I, I didn't call out anybody, I took what was sent to me by the city, because that's what we announced throughout the day at the park. When you're in here, make sure you thank these businesses who sponsor, because if they don't sponsor, we don't have them. Or we're gonna have to get to a position where we're charging people as they come in the park, and that would be a major nightmare, to try to charge as folks come in the gate at the park. Um, but I mean, this year, we're at a huge deficit.
Yeah, well, we got local businesses. Ray Harbor, y'all know the owner of Ray Harbor, right?
Joe Special.
I'm gonna ask him, when, when he give Leon a lock to raise brands. I didn't even ask him. He had a wedding out there, I.
Four years ago.
Four years ago, that man had a wedding out there that cost probably more than it cost you having downtown Chattanooga, Bee House. Out in the field, I seen tents that I'd never seen before, they looked like circus, they put circus tents to shame. He had glass, the fake plastic glass. That was Ray's daughter's wedding, he, I got that place in hell for him to do that, he's been anything. He said, anything you ever need, forget here. He said, anything you, said, don't let nobody else come and ask me. He called me and he said, who did I need to give this check to? And I said, well, you can talk to him. And he said, wait just a minute. Who'd I say doing the work? I said, well, me and my crew. He said, Mr. Rock, it's old Ray Harbor picked the check up in a lot of people, and I'm gonna tell them. It better be the black guy in the white truck that come to get it. Nobody else is detecting the check. And she looked at me, she's like, she's, wait, you're a black guy? He said, me on lock. That's yours. But now, but you gotta go ask people. And don't send, I don't know, you send them a letter sometimes, you just wrote that sometimes, and here's what happened. Ladies and gentlemen, business, you send one too many letters to them at the same time, they know you're calling them, they're gonna go to the garbage room, just push the sign. Or the new girl working as a reception, and I don't have a clue what that is. Oh, you need to open that mail out there, see what's important, and let us know. Well, else you didn't like solicitation, letting them know, because. But anyway, can't say what happened, but Mr. Doug, please, sir.
Just a couple of questions, kinda curious. So Parks Recreation, who's responsible for that?
The Park Board?
Commissioners.
They are under.
They're under the Commissioners, the way I read that, I've read it, so. So the Commissioners are over the Park Board. So who is in charge of the Park Board? What's, there are people, chairman or vice chairman?
Who's on your board?
Betsy, I think is chairman, I think is how it's listed on the city. I'm vice chairman. Michelle Houston, I think is secretary treasurer.
Okay.
I think that's, I, I think that's how it goes.
Okay. And then Friends of the Park, who are they?
Honey Romanoff, Anne, that's the five oh one C.
Who, okay, so what's, who's in charge of it?
Honey Romanoff. Anne, Honey, Honey, the little bitty short.
Then who's second from there?
I would have to look at the thing, because I don't know.
It's a five oh one C, so you guys have to have.
I think it's.
You, you have a.
I can't remember who's, because I'm not on that one.
Who's in charge, and then you file taxes every year, you're doing that.
She, how do you know it's all that?
So when you go to try to contact Friends of the Park, they give us an email. When you go to contact the Park Board, you get an email. It's the same email.
Wait a minute, like.
Yeah.
If you go.
Parks and Recreation.
Sorry, City Parks and Recreation's on the email we have, and I'm not on the.
It's the same one.
I mean, I'm the Park Board.
It's both over the city and with Friends. So when I say, and then heard, they heard, and representation, involved with Parks and Recreation, okay? And then you try to find somebody to co-talk to or contact, it's the same person who works for the city, who's also part of Friends of the Park. So it seems kind of a little bit of conflict to me.
We were.
Well, not more, choose me, part of the board. Yes. So anyway, just going back to that, you know, just setting a baseline of who's in charge of what, and what, what drove a little bit of this, from my standpoint, she's a face of the city, there's nothing wrong with that, that's a good thing. Okay? Anyway, so just, I, I think maybe we ought to look at that. I think there's conflict there, I would do, or potential conflict, on, from the city's side. So also, having Down to Spring City on that post, on a social media post, puts you guys at the same risk as far as being, saying this. So then it makes me wonder. So when, when are budgets made for Park, for the fireworks?
We don't give any money to the Park Board, all we do is the fireworks. We vote on it, go pay them.
So who, when do you know how much to pay?
Well, they send the contract. They send the contract, they, we solicit for early signup with them for a discount. They give us a quoted price, we pay half the million, and the other half.
I think it's, Doug, I think it was like the end of September of last year is where we provide the dates. They contact fireworks shows, fireworks shows write that the contract, it comes back, and then we pay half if there's agreement. And then I think the other half is upon receipt of the.
It's usually the day of the fireworks.
We split the cost of the, of the fireworks within two different budget years. So like, the first half was paid, I believe, I paid it like in March, and then I paid the second half in this budget year. Matter of fact, I think they didn't sign the check.
So, and when Spring City says their budget, fireworks, what are you allowing? You have a number that you're allowing, just a standard number?
No, we don't have a standard number, we just, pretty much.
So we just pull out our backpack and.
We allow the budget of last year. We base off the budget of last, we go by the contract, whatever the.
Your contract was last year, that's what we, that's what we base it on.
That's what, okay, so you do have a baseline?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I was asking. So. So what has changed? So to me, it felt like something changed with communication. It felt like that was the voice to call us out, to shame us, intent to harm. I felt like. And I'm wondering, what I missed? I think I got a letter in February.
I'm sure.
Okay? A lot of paper comes through there. Fireworks happens every year. It's not, it's a no-brainer, you're looking for money, okay? But it's just like Anne said a little bit ago, the folks at Isaiah House come and found us personally, and we spoke to them, and we donated. Nobody from the city, or who's responsible for getting the donations?
That, that's gonna be another one on the B P's to deal with.
That's where we could.
Where?
Donations kind of City Hall for the fireworks.
So who, but who, who brought that flyer to my, to the, to the mayor?
It's a problem.
Any, anything that happened, got lost in the mail, February.
I'm sure we got it.
Oh, well, I don't know.
Don't worry.
I don't know.
Mailman.
He could got something up.
Got stirred behind the nose, his mouth.
Right.
I'll get that out of me, I've had, we don't get struck to another one anymore.
And that's neither here nor there, I know it's the fireworks, I know you're looking for money, so I'm not, I'm just asking, so who's responsible for that? So to make sure, I mean, is that, it feels like that much built-up tension over money to come out on social media and call twenty businesses out in Spring City?
But there was nobody called out, that's, that's why I guess I don't.
Contact these businesses, you don't see.
No, I said, these are the businesses that have sponsored.
You don't see them here, contact them.
Ask them if they've sponsored, you aren't gonna sponsor this week.
So I found out, because I found out, we called a customer, asked them. I'm supposed to ask you this? We asked? Were they asking? Oh, I'm not supposed to shop here either?
Uh, there was nothing ever said about that.
Yeah.
There was nothing ever said, I didn't say that.
This is the conversation, end of story. I'm supposed to call Walmart, wherever it's at, they have to deliver.
It's an option.
This is, this is what I'm talking.
That's just her opinion.
Here, here's the option.
That's a voice of the city.
Here, here's the post, it said, if you don't see a business that you frequent on this list, ask them. For me personally, I spend a lot more to shop locally, implying that we're all down here high.
Yes.
As I'm sure many of you do. In the past, it was necessary, but with the new delivery options we have in Spring City, it's no longer a have-to case, and they're talking about Walmart delivery, and the next day, there was a post with her getting her Walmart delivery. Who is that at? Is, is it a, is it Elbers Ace? Is it Pig? Who's it, is it Family Dollar? Who's it?
I'll get it right, I'll show off February.
Oh, I don't, I don't run off, yes, I don't, I don't.
But I, I think that you guys can see how it was taken personally by many people.
It was taken per, so then we go back, she mentioned this a little bit ago, code of ethics, code of conduct. So when I, when I look at this, and the board's over the Parks and Recreation, Recreations, okay? And then the Friends kinda got a link over here, their little appendix, with an email attachment that links both the city and that. What was it?
What, what I'm curious about was which, where, where was this posted?
It was posted on a social media, on Facebook.
Friends and Friends of the Park.
And to answer your question, Doug.
Yes, sir.
Here's what's gonna happen. Now, let me tell you something, that post cost legal. Okay, it, it hurt me. The way it was told to me, and then I read it, and then I had some little problem. Now, a lot of people, I've got a lot of good friends in Dexter that I highly respect. People in places and positions. And when they call me and they stole me, here's what come out. Love me, like me, or hate me. Friends of the Park, Park Board, we're gonna start having meetings here, y'all make your mind up, where it's gonna be bi-monthly, I mean, every other month, every quarter, it don't make a difference to me, what, we got a company, everybody's supposed to sign it. If you're gonna be involved, we gonna come here and we gonna talk. I don't care if they got, if we don't spend fifteen minutes here, it's no time. If you got time to sign your name and be a part of it, you got time to come sit down and have an open discussion.
And we never had that before.
No, it's never happened before. They said, now, the other board and commission, didn't, wasn't comfortable in this.
We did try that. We did, I, I was here.
Well, somebody on this board failed because they didn't keep it up.
I was gonna say, I've been here for fourteen years, I think I've been on the Park Board.
So we, it gets, and like I said, people ask me when I ran, why I didn't come and knock on doors. Anybody in here, I come and knock on your door and ask you for a vote? Because I didn't have no light to take. I said, I gotta fix the problem. You think we got potholes in the road? We got more problems in the city government than we got in pockets. And I, I think it come back, I don't think. We got some key people that has kept this blooming place together, and they still with it. I didn't throw my name in the hat because I was told and asked, and I told them, made a commitment to somebody. That man dead and gone, but I was called after the first year, said, look, we was all sitting at the table, you promised this man you'd run for mayor. You're a man of your word, in or out. I said, well, I ain't gonna eat my word in, so you mean it. But I made him a promise, I would not go knock on nobody's door because they're gonna, well, what you gonna do? I ain't gonna tell you no lie, I mean, I'm in Arizona, I start a tale, that's, I just have another tale, man. All I want to do is this, people. Fix what's broken, get everybody on the same page, and get reunited. And we are not gonna do that, we're sitting up here once or twice a month, getting out any commitments. I'm returning in August. Like I said, I'm gonna look like a bad tick on horses here. I've got a few.
I'm still, I'm still confused. On this post on Facebook, did somebody post this on their account?
It wasn't on the city website, no, but it involved city logo.
It's Friends of the Park, but we took, we took what I get an email that I have to print off and take to the park to announce throughout the day. I took that post because it's decorative, and it's not just the straight list that's just a, a, a Excel document with names, because it's got the totals, and I didn't think that was very cool to put the numbers that were donated next to the person who donated it. So we took the, the pretty, the pretty picture and posted that, so I probably should have cut the top of the logo off.
So also, business in position, where were the cause of cities that didn't do a donation? Are the reason now, next year, everyone's gonna be charged? The fireworks?
No, everybody.
I said, no.
That was on.
I said, we don't wanna ever get to a point.
I understand what was said on social media, that's why, you see what I'm saying? Yeah. But now, so I go back to code of conduct. I do believe that there is an issue there for the city, and I desire for something to be done, whatever that may be.
Before you close it out or get on anything else, I hate to do this, but Dixie U's is, they got some, a ball of things going out, playing, they're looking for donations. I'm not being nice.
And we've already donated, Keith. What, Kevin, we've already donated, we've donated to three of the teams, all three teams.
I just talked to Freddie, because, I'm kidding to you, but anybody in here that can donate, no matter what it is.
Is, is that the same group that did parking for us?
I don't know. That's my mom's. We're talking about Dixie U.
Dixie U.
Well.
I think they're going.
For middle Tennessee.
Is this Frankie?
No. Yeah, Frankie, but I don't know if his paying might.
And, and we, just watch that for example, the Dixie U, that came to me in the spring, one of the ladies, her daughter plays, hey, we, we wanna put, we, we need donations. We gave them five hundred dollars, they came to me. I don't, paper comes across my desk constantly. I mean, what, these people, these people that want donations, why are they not out pounding the street like we did when we wanted?
Diamonds forward, it's not Dixie U, but that's, that's what.
That's what everybody.
We, we, we.
Yeah, it's what we claim when it's.
I'm just saying, I was gonna throw that out there to everybody that's in here, because I, I, I made a donation.
And that, these, these three teams are going to state. It's a big deal. If people can donate to them, they should be doing it. These kids will never forget it.
I'm gonna go back here, because I've been here a long time. But I do recall, vaguely, at some point in time, and I don't think you were hearing that that one, Brenda, that there was confusion with the Park Board as far as who was going to solicit donations and all of that.
We were told that.
And the city came in, that's, well, if I recall, if it's been years ago, the city came in and said, well, okay, we'll send out the letters, because we thought the Park Board was sending out the letters. I think they thought we were sending them out.
No, something to do with the five oh one C three, and we were told that we could not go out, and we could not solicit money, we could not ask for it. And had to go, and that's why it ended up shifting.
Yeah, and then the city.
That was a really great.
That is, okay, yeah, I feel it right.
Yeah.
That would be the right. So that, I think that accounts for some of the confusion as to who's doing what. And so I think, Leon, that is one thing that we definitely need to straighten out. And whereas we know who is contacting businesses and how they're contacting them, we need to get something in order, whereas I, I think it's been kind of loose for a while now.
Broke, it ain't, it ain't never been fixed, it broke this town.
I think the letters going out, and, and a couple of years ago, the letters didn't go out till like a week before.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to straighten all this out, we need to get together and get some protocol set down where we know who's doing what, and.
The, the bottom line, I think what Doug wanted to get across, is we donate to a lot of things, a lot, daily, we are donating. And to call businesses out because they didn't, in my opinion, is, is wrong. And just like, there's businesses in our town that are struggling so hard, they can't afford to give you fifteen dollars. I know, one of the, I, I won't even say who, but it's, it's a, it's a struggle right now with everybody to make ends meet, and, you know, you don't need to be added on like that.
She just now told me, we went from putting out thirty letters, she said ninety. Here's another thing we got going on. We have so many things going on in this town. So many little sports, all these different act, all these different communities, all these different events, and everybody's wanting a, a donation. These businesses can only donate so much, and, you know, some, they have to put a stop somewhere. It's like the tourism. They ask for donations for the Blooms Festival, right? They ask for donations for lighting of the E power. Park Board's asking for donations for the fireworks. We just stopped doing talking about the Dixie, or the Diamonds Board.
Yeah, but I was talking to individuals, because they're, they're taking individuals.
Can I, I brought you the Isaiah one seventeen house, the senior life house. I mean, the list just goes on and on and on, and, you know, and I see what works, we ask for donations, but think about all these businesses and how they're.
They get hit seven ways from Sunday. But you know something? These groups and these organizations, they secure the problem from nations. Well, the town of Spring City give it to you. That whole bench in the park is spits them one end to the other. Bound to a band, have a concert, charge at the gate, put the money in the park. Have a, you know, there's a bench that you could put in that place and charge at the gate and make money for your stuff. But you know what? I'm gonna take it. Get mad at you and hate me. They work it, they ain't nobody gonna get out and sweat. I'm truthful, I mean, how many people is gonna say, now, these Dixie, uh, Dallas Board people, they have a car wash this weekend? One of them told me, I said, well, I gotta take a trip in my vehicle, I'll be by there early to get washed, said he. And I gave him some money, and he says, what's that for? I said, my car wash is paid in advance, I got to beat you. So, you know, everybody's asking for a donation. What happened? Folks, Tito, Drono, y'all don't know what a bloodbath I took on. Y'all don't know what kind of evil thoughts went through my mind though, but one of my things just always is, these boards, we gonna have a code use meeting, I told you. We gonna have names, I want names, I want board members, I want positions. If you're under the umbrella of the city, I want it. I'm sorry.
That's the only way.
The only way I'm gonna fix it, the only way I ever know anything about it. I'm not being malicious, I'm not being hard, but it's bottom line, it is. I gotta take a stand somewhere to put this back together.
And that's, and, and that's what we need, that's what we needed, but we have not had a partnership with the city, times have changed. Okay, can I say something real quick, though? They made the comment that they can't, that if they don't get anybody from them in and help, that this is gonna wither away. If we don't know you're having meetings and you don't open it up to the public, you can't have somebody come in and volunteer. We typically, we have maybe two meetings a year. Again, exactly. How are you gonna get, no, if nobody knows.
Well, here, here's the thing.
We did, last year, we let, we let Stephanie know every time we were gonna meet or every time we won't, because we had to meet here.
Uh, and I tell you, at, at one point, there were some problems with the park board, I don't remember exactly what they were. But I volunteered to come to meetings with the park board, just as a liaison for the city, and I never heard the first time.
I did try that when I first got in, but.
You, you met with us.
I, I met with them, but we had a, a different chief of police, and he was, he rubbed them the wrong way, and he was this and that. It's hard, but it's hard, everybody's gonna have to be flexible when you do this, you can't go in with a mindset. Uh, they're just gonna do this, or they're just gonna do that. We all, to work, and I'm, you know, I've worked together for, it was just.
And that's, it all came down to Friday or Saturday night, at the end of the night, we were all tired, ready to go home, but we stayed to pick up garbage, so the other crew wouldn't have to come in on Sunday and do.
Let's not keep Ray Hines picking up garbage.
No, 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 no.
I was garbage pickup.
But, but we stayed, and I was told by one of my park board members, I don't care whether they have to come in tomorrow, and it's like, we have an opportunity. To have a relationship with a commission that we've not had before. Because we've had no involvement from the city, so.
Well, I, I have made it, and I, I have tried to reach out differently. One, I'm saying, we gotta change, gotta be involved. People, I have to go to meetings with people that I have been promising, I despise them, to be in the same room, but I gotta be there. I gotta suck up the fat and go sit down and focus on what I'm up for. I don't care what, I don't like Jody at all, I'm there for a reason, for Leon's reason to be involved. Do my part. You don't have to love him, hug him, and kiss him to come into your part. That has been a, a bad thing. A lot of people got bitter, they got despised towards one another, and they wouldn't let. I'm asking.
Well, that's because, because some people, you get that tone, that, they hold the grudge.
And, and one of the things I get spied upon, being patient. I can wait over. There's gonna be a heat cup in the road, and I'm gonna be still there looking, Kevin, I'm not gonna fight it, I'm just gonna roll with the flow, there's an answer. We got answers. Yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna ask you, on meetings, can we, when Kevin isn't here, when he's out of town for work, can we FaceTime with him? So he hears what's going on. You, you FaceTime.
Wait, wait. Let me ask our legal terms about that, okay?
Only because. He's not here, he likes to be involved.
Somebody, see, little thing, I, I can watch it, what goes on, I'd like to be here live, but I can't speak live.
I know, but you would at least know what was going on, and at least you could say something. And just say, well, meh, I'm not there, but you know my, my opinion on it. Only because. I hope you have a code to Jesus meeting with your commissioners.
We, we, we got refugees and officers who got cross.
Yes.
We failed in our job, end of my discussion. That's the way I feel about it, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am?
I may get run out of town.
Ain't running me out of here. I ain't getting shot yet.
I've had a board at my side for a number of years over our Christmas parades.
Yes, ma'am.
Our business people want us to shop at them. And their library is, is from the people of Spring City and, and North Ray County mainly, that gives them a library to do. I agree that they need more education public for the city. But when we have a Christmas parade and none of them put a float in the parade, that's not supporting the town or the people that gives them a living. They put a car in there, some of them with a, going candy out, which kids gonna get killed someday doing that.
Well, that, and, and there again.
That's one of our big things.
You, you brought that in four now, but it's, it's one out behind the mountain, it's getting people involved to do it. You, you remember, you remember when you was involved. Who filled in the float? I'll ride.
I mean, it, that's.
Seventy days a week. Went south. It's, it's failure involvement, we, we look at, and this is what comes already. Bible says, each generation gets weaker and wiser, okay?
That's what?
Each generation gets weaker and wiser. They're weaker in strength and wiser in mind, because I've got a remote control on, where I can sit here and keep watching TV and hear my grass. I'm wise now, see, I don't have to do nothing. I've gotten weak because I'm lazy, besides pushing a button, weaker and wiser. Modern technology gets taking over, I'm gonna ride in my convertible and wave. Used to, there's horse and buggy, used to, there was old farm wagons, with hay bales and all the stuff. The high schools was involved, the Beta Club, the cheerleaders, what do we see at that now?
My children were involved in the cheerleading. We then prayed to the Red Bell. And every group in there had a float.
Had a float.
We, we got chicken wire and crepe paper, and.
Decorated.
It didn't take long to do it, I, we decided what we was gonna do, everybody had a great time working.
Go football field. I'm being serious, go over there and ask somebody young people football now with chicken wire.
What, what, oh, chicken wire?
Yeah, go over there and ask them what chicken wire.
I, I will say, on behalf of the chamber and the Christmas parade, in the past four years, we've grown at least twenty to twenty-five floats. And our parade has become a very large parade, even compared to the strawberry festival. Um, I've talked to them several times, and even, I know we don't wanna compare with Dayton, but we do get comparisons about our scholarship pageants. And their pageant stay down there, our parade is now becoming larger than their parade is. Well, we've just got to become a community and level on each other and support each other.
We all have cars.
Get them in hall.
We have cars, you don't have the cars.
Most of the floats should come off the mountain.
Set up to do events at the park, but we got these beautiful parks here, it'll be tough.
Go to the city hall and get an event permit, fill it out on what type of event you wanna have.
Cause I'm through our language, I can raise free drive and bakery. I would not be opposed to helping out to raise money for the Christmas festivals and. I think if we set up and do something on a Friday, Saturday, or even a Sunday afternoon or whatever, the people here would love to come out and support us. I mean, I've noticed, we've been here for a year and a half, and I've noticed a huge support that's here.
But you, you gotta have meetings, and you gotta have word of mouth get out, like I said before, when. Walking. People. There's a lot of other people that's commented about failure of notification. Uh, failure of being recognized. Here's the thing, for being from marketing. If I live up there and I promote his business who's above me, his business who's on the yard in front of me, who are they gonna pass first? To get to his business? I'm advertising. Lots, bar of real advertisers, stop in here and have a burger or something, another four people going over to check out Robbie's art games. I mean, you, you gotta, you feed off of one another. How do you think that little old meter in the campground, don't have nothing but spots on the ground, no running, no real running water, electricity? How do you think you're full of ninety percent of the people who's outside Ray County paying twenty-two dollars a night, sleepwalking?
Spoke to Dave.
Cause it's beautiful.
That was the greatest place in the world.
It was shared, people.
And it's, and it's beautiful out there, that's another thing.
I had lady that's from.
I've had people from all over ask, how do we get in touch with somebody for Ray Springs?
She's from Oregon, and she went and stopped at Ray Springs, she's in marketing. She promoted Ray Springs Live yesterday from sitting on the pitch. What a great place to be, and guess what, I get a phone call from Westwood. Do you have any spots open, I said, brother, you're about a day late, and two hours in the dark, we go. Folks, does anybody got anything else?
Can I just say something just briefly? In spite of all this negativity everybody's talking about, we have done a lot of stuff in this community, and. Sometime you can go down over to city hall, and we have been working with the Tennessee Riverline, there's the, I'm gonna get wrong, the helping, what's it called? Local places, local food program, um, and there's, we've worked on the five, you know, the, um, citywide master plan. And there's different people that we've partnered with to make up this concept for a lot of different things. And it's all the stuff that has to go on, and these are projects that could be anywhere in the five, ten, fifteen, or twenty years, but this is a vision of what our community could be. So there's a lot of stuff that's going on, guys, and, and we care, and that's why we show up. You may not think we care, but we do, and we're trying to make things better for our community, because we love it. I may not have been born here, but this is my home.
Hi, so thank you for mentioning, I've been heard of.
Well, and, and when there's these, I know, and that's why I'm saying it, and these things are pro, programs that have been worked on, and they always do public.
Relationships.
Sessions, and it's like, and that's why we want people to come out. So there are things that are going on, even though.
Well, like the Riverline and the park projects, people set up, got it, check, let me think, we set.
And there was a lot of people that.
A lot of people saying, and I got a lot of phone calls about, we didn't know that's what this was gonna look like, I just overweaved, I said, well. Somewhere down the road, when Uncle Donald sent me my beans or dollars, we'll get it done, but until then, we got to try and promise, hopefully.
I had no idea what was, I thought there's gonna be a crash or a concrete.
Yeah, that's all I remember thinking about it, and I was thinking, I keep saying that man's kayak round is gonna be at Washmore Dam, I don't care what he says. With that old tiny creek, it's gonna be gone. People. We, we working on it, trying to get our act together. I gotta say, it's totally new, I feel like a lot of people shouldn't been having a birthday party celebrating on some, I would like to turn south on it. I ain't gonna run it for me, I'm here, I'm willing to, to negotiate. I know we got a lot of stuff we gotta do, we got potholes, we got weeds, bushes, and all kinds. We are looking in to get, I'll take care of it eventually.
Tree dance?
I've, uh. Where's that tree dance at? I got a pole saw.
It's gentleman's house.
They're talking about, so, I just moved into this area, I lived in Covering Camp for twenty-six years, grew up from camp, you know, so. I work at Oak Ridge, fixing retired, hopefully the next few years, ten years, I was fixing a lot, love this area. Seen it by boat for years, my wife said, when are these people gonna move down? Well, we did, February. Well, so, I'm working, so I call my wife, check her on her, see if I need to bring home anything on my travels all the way through three or four camps. She called and said, well, we got a visit today, I said, well, who's it from? I thought it was from, you know, tough and terrible, whoever, she said, oh, it was from the codes enforcement. So, what do we do now, we just got moved in? And they said, something about your trees ain't tall enough, they're, they're too low, you know, overhanging. I said, well, Kyle's hardware over here, said they got a pole saw, cause I'm gonna have to some pile it up to get sixteen foot clear. Yeah, fourteen and a half, I could have about sixteen, so it would be no surprise. But, uh, you know, so, some box truck come through there, you know, he said, I'm not gonna write you a ticket, I'm not gonna give you a warrant, I send you on moving, you're not here long enough, doing that. And while I'm talking, is there a, is there a book with all the rules and laws? I've not been in the city, I've not been in the city in about thirty years, I lived at the county, and I loved that county, but the reason I left it first, cause that's the gray stripes coming in, and it was in my back door. So, but anyway, is there a book?
It's on the website of code, you both want to stand there, you got the judge, we got it down here, see, at the office, or is it online?
Where'd you have the PDF?
Uh?
Where'd you have the PDF?
Okay, you run by the, check here, the police station, they, you can go get the PDF off.
And your, your crash drive is a mess, you can't even drive up it without the, the brush pushes knocking into your car, nothing's being done.
You, you.
Nothing. It's a mess up there.
We, I've got somebody coming this way, I asked you to be patient, I've asked you to call in some favors, friends. Now, nobody has called and said, thank you for cutting the bushes down where I can see over the guardrail.
Well, you really still can't see that.
You can see, no, tell me that. The bushes has been cut. Now, listen to me.
Who, who cut the bushes down there by the old pajama plant? That's not a county road, so the city had to do it.
County, you know, you cut them, you cut them, if everybody's stay out of my business, I can give county to come to a hip, okay? So what'd you buy the tractor for? The tractor asked me, we don't talk about the tractor, okay? Didn't want to make you mad. Don't talk.
Well, you spent our money, so I like it all back.
What can I just say? I will not vote or pay anything for anything that I don't go touch. Okay? I had indicated last week, Steph, I'm gonna be mad about it, okay? Very mad about it. We commissioners have been, took to the cleaners, and that's all I got to say about it. That's why I say, we got to do better, we could haul the tractor, I got a trailer, and we can put that on the tank, and you haul it, you, you don't. Ain't no use in going to your local diesel mechanic, they'll get something working on, totally won't, say, I just said, ain't no nothing about it, okay? But if the traffic can be taken care of, we, we gotta haul it, city don't have nothing to haul, I'm sorry. We will.
Can the city, or is the city allowed to cut private?
Property now.
Now, that's what I started saying, could you go, as far as things growing out. No, that's what I started saying, could you go, as far as things growing out into, to, is the property owner's responsibility? And if, if they don't, keep it up, then that would.
That's, that's a decision, decision that.
Not mandated right away?
Ma'am?
Is the state not mandated right away for cities?
Well, ma'am, the, the city made a, a, a ruling to stop doing that, okay? The commissioner, I understand that they, they somebody that was involved when that was done has communicated with me that I need to get my hands on it and change it back. Now, the reason why it got changed is because some county, some city took a hit on a lawsuit for their own nick. It's all right? Yes, a sign on law is dangerous. Uh, side cut bush on law can be dangerous if not properly used. I'm not a fond friend of the side on law unless you reach it. I'm down in two, going up high along the side of the bank like that. That thing that swings stuff, you hear, not that sign off party, it's no problem. If you see what that done up here, when the guy's done the guardrail up there, they stuffed a hundred yards from where they had the bushes where. So it's, it's not very safe and adequate, but the city made that decision to stop mowing it because of a lawsuit. They got paid for it. I'm sorry, if the state in Tennessee can mow the roadways, and a county government can go through and mow the roadways, they cut my bushes out of the farm. And there ain't a jihadist thing I can do about it. Because idiots in the way of cutting. The city bailed out because they prayed to me in lawsuits. I'm gonna tell you the truth. I know all about that part. But we, as commissioners, we need to sit down and talk about that. I'm sorry, we got the equipment. How many times do we remember seeing our older guys cleaning these ditch lines with swing sippers before tractors over there and being? Our old Mr. Mintz, he riding that tractor with that sipper bar motor on there, he slanging grass from across the field when he went by.
The city came forward, why doesn't the code officer say that the landowner?
Well, that's true, too. We can do that. But here's what, here's my problem. Here's my problem. What if that property belongs to somebody who is not able to do anything about it? And then you're gonna hire somebody that's gonna charge you twice the money to do it. You pay taxes. You shop open. I think the city's responsibility is to take care within the compounds of the city limits. The county takes care of the compound of the county limits. Again, there's some things that I'm gonna change, you know? I mean, I'm gonna be probably the most hated guy in the world, or somebody's gonna put me out there and put me on a rental truck and send me south, so. I'm gonna get it in my hands to make the legal change. Hell, I can't, you can't get yourself here, just done deal. There's loopholes and paperwork we gotta go through legally. I want a legal. I'm gonna do everything strictly by the book. Ain't no Shanghai, who, been called everything anymore. I had a bunch of crime that don't matter who. Folks, it's almost nine thirty. I gotta go back to work. Anybody got anything else?
Just one thing. I was very upset to see city without armed, cutting the city, attorney's property.
Talking about the one that was just Kimmer Road, that on the left. And I don't know anything down that now.
But they partner with the city, property on the street.
I know that the city's always is, cause that's. This one on the other, they're close. Really know, but I mean, that means because they can cut them, if I understand, if it's a hazard, a visual hazard.
I'm done. It was, I got MJQ, I seen it. Yeah, we just stayed for five minutes, players, same state.
Have not had an emotion of.